Thank you. Welcome, everybody, to this slightly out of schedule, November 24th, 2025, meeting of the New Market School Board. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So this is a special meeting that we noticed because we need to finalize the budget proposal for the 2026-2027 school year. We had planned to vote on that at the last meeting, but we needed to postpone it for a little bit to make sure that we had a couple of numbers correct. So without further ado, I'd invite Bryant Lee to the podium, our business administrator, who can bring us up to date on where everything stands.
And Bryant, before you start, I just, I did want to just start by saying thank you to the board for your flexibility. Clearly, last Thursday evening, we were not 100% confident in the numbers we were putting in front of you, and we needed the time to become confident. And I'm happy to say we are confident in what we're about to present to you tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to Bryant to kind of share his memo and discuss the changes to the narrative.
So we had to make some edits in the budget report to correctly reflect.
Can you get the mic up?
Is this better?
Is it on?
Looks like it's on.
Is the, the mic at the podium on?
Channel eight, are you hearing Bryant okay? Yeah?
Well, that's better.
Should I continue or wait?
Give it a try.
Okay. So we had to make some edits to the budget report to correctly reflect how the federal grants are accounted for in expenditure and revenue projections. So federal grant expenditure and revenue should always net to zero. So the way it works is activities are programmed, we spend the money to implement the activities, and then we get reimbursed. So those funds are not raised through local taxation, and we also don't include them in the budget for the general fund. But we do have to include them, the grant amount, in the total appropriation that we asked for in the warrant, and that's what I wasn't totally clear about at first. So we're projecting $400,000 for federal grants in fiscal year '27, so we have to add this amount to both our total expenditure and revenue projections. So that means our total proposed operating budget has been amended to now $30,547,370 for fiscal year '27. So that's an increase of $400,000 from what we had previously been saying before. And that actually calculates out to a 4.35 increase from the total appropriation that was approved in last year's warrant. Now, the reason we recommended delaying the approval of the proposed budget last week is that, at first glance, it didn't look like the appropriation amount that was approved last year was matching with the baseline figure that, from '25-'26, that we've been calculating for the percentage increase this whole time, which is sort of the key metric that everyone looks to key in on. But now, having more time to look into it, there wasn't actually a discrepancy after all. I made the mistake of looking only at the operating budget appropriation, but forgot to include the cost for the teachers' CBA for year one of that agreement, as well as the appropriations that were approved for the trust funds. So then, adding all these costs together, it does match exactly with the baseline budget that we've been presenting throughout this process to the dollar. So that 4.35 increase is the correct figure, as opposed to 4.41 that you have been hearing from us over and over up till now. So huge apologies for creating a bit of a panic last week, and then, you know, for the extra time needed tonight, but I wanted to make sure that the numbers were right before we move forward. Do you have any questions about that piece of it?
If I could just add real quick, in the budget narrative that you have, that's attached to the agenda and that you have been given, page 12 is the, the page that sort of shows that the adjustments that were made. And so you, what you can see there is the total up that we proposed in the '26-'27 budget, it's the exact same number. It's the same number of dollars more, $1,272,979. Why it drops from 4.41 to 4.35 is, once you factor in the additional $400,000, the denominator, it's a math lesson, everybody, the denominator you're, you're working from is bigger, therefore the percentage drops by .06%. So effectively, it's the same number of dollars that is an increase year over year, but because the denominator got bigger, the, the up is 4.35, not 4.41.
Questions, comments from the board?
I don't want to sit here thunder, but I think, I don't think there's any reason to apologize. I think we all appreciate that, you know, you want to do your diligence, and we want to be thorough, and I think we'd all rather take an extra couple of days and make sure everything's crossed and dotted than, you know, move forward to something anyone feels at all uncomfortable with.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thanks. It, you know, I, it was a bit of a scramble on Thursday, and, you know, it, given the small magnitude of the change, it would have been pretty easy to just say, well, we'll avoid the drama, and let's just, we'll fix it later. But, you know, I appreciate you tapping the brakes on it and making sure that you've got it right. We, you know, we only get one chance to, to do this without having to revise it, so it's good that we got it in there. And just, I mean, for anyone watching at home, just to put it in very plain English, I think, whether the money comes from local taxes, whether it comes from the state, whether it comes from the federal government, the school district can't spend it unless the voters approve it. So we have to have the right total on here, even if it's money that is reimbursed by the federal government, dollar for dollar, for what we spend, we can't spend it unless the voters approve it. So the warrant has to have the correct number on it.
Yeah, and thank you for saying that, Dan, because that's absolutely correct. When the voters approve, the bottom line, that's the maximum number of dollars we can spend in a year, and that includes from all sources. So the only way to do it, if we didn't approve it, would be to have a special meeting, which clearly is not something that, that we would do. Bryant, can you just real quick talk, just go back to the, the adequacy aid and just quickly talk about that? What was the, what were the numbers? Because I do think that's good news, that, I don't want to lose that in the shuffle. We actually ended up with a higher estimate than we had intended.
Yes, there's one minor, additional minor edit. Because we got an updated estimate from the DOE on November 14th on adequacy aid, as well as SWEPT for fiscal year '27. So the adequacy grant is projected to increase by 4%, or an increase of $123,679. So we've increased our revenue projections by that much. Meanwhile, SWEPT has actually decreased by $34,428 compared to the last year. So it's a bit of a mixed bag, but on net, it's, we're expecting more revenue from the state.
And just for people listening at home, SWEPT is the statewide education property tax. If that is lower, that's good. We want that to be lower because it means fewer dollars being collected from taxpayers in return. When the, when the grant aid goes up, that's good because it reduces taxation. So the two items, the, the adequacy grant going up and SWEPT going down, both work in our favor. So that's, that's good. And it doesn't show up in this budget, but when it gets to tax rate setting time, clearly having more revenue coming from outside the system means lower property taxes to New Market people.
So we've updated the, the report, both the narrative, as well as the tables and the charts and figures with these updated numbers, so everything should be, should be good now.
Yeah, I think it might be worth, and you've both said this plainly, but maybe in my simple mind, in simple English, but just to reiterate that what we ask the taxpayers to approve is the total amount of money that we want to spend. And again, not all of it comes from taxpayers, and that's what we always strive to keep as high as possible, and we always talk about, and that's why grants are so important, and that's why adequacy aid, when we talk about it every year, is so important. And so I just think it's really good to point that out.
Yes, 100%, 100%. Now, the intent had been, on Thursday night, that we would have a little bit of a discussion. I know, I know Kathy, you had indicated you had some thoughts you wanted to share, just in terms of editorial, so certainly we're, yes, red pen related stuff. So you, I don't know if we want to take a few minutes to give people a chance to give us any input, because my intention is, assuming that we get approval on this tonight, Bryant and I will make whatever narrative adjustments we need to tomorrow, so that I can share it with the Budget Committee, because I'm presenting it to them on, on Monday.
Just speak loudly, we'll do the best we can.
I've always been known to be able to speak very loud, so. One of them was on page 18, commas between the words specialized, there is, it's in the high school report, page 18, and I believe that they needed some commas. I'll keep my New Hampshire accent from saying commas. Let me see. 1518, yes.
Okay, I will find those.
Yeah. It would be, there was a series of, it came between the words special education, so that would be it. And then, on the ESOL page, could there be a graph or something instead of, what's that?
Do you have the page number?
ESOL.
Page 22?
22. There's that nice little picture there of, you know, the kids around the world, but there are also a lot of letters, numbers, right next to that. And this means a, and I'm wondering if somehow that could be put into some kind of bullets or a graph, or something that's a little, might be a little easier to read.
Yep, absolutely.
So those would be, we have the open enrollment music and then we'll, I think that was it.
All right, thank you. Other suggestions or comments?
I also had a graph, not a graph, yeah, a line, on the page of it. It's the one with the budget increases over the year eight. Yeah, yes, page?
Page nine?
Nine, with trends in budget increases.
Mm-hmm.
I just didn't know if, if I wasn't, if I was a newer to town, or just not somebody who was aware of teacher contracts coming at certain years, that I would maybe question why '25-'26 was extremely low. I didn't know if there was a way to put just a small footnote in there, that that was a year of a significant, you know, collective bargaining agreement, that we specifically had a very, very low target that year because of it, just in terms of some context, so that it didn't, because I think if you keep that in mind, that it's rather, you know, steady from '21-'22 to '26-'27.
Yep. I think we can figure that one out, can't we, Bryant?
Yeah, we can add a footnote.
That's what I was thinking, like collective bargaining year, and just little asterisks or something, yeah.
Well, and if we're going to annotate this a little bit, the big percentage increase, 2020, 21, wasn't that the year we started paying the bond on the renovations?
I would, I can double check, I'm not 100%. I think it was the year before.
COVID with inflation.
Yeah, it would have been probably, it was ESAR grant money, and I bet they bumped the total budget up to be able to spend the ESAR monies.
Okay, that's a good point.
But it wouldn't hurt to mention ESAR.
I found my spot on page 18. It comes after the CECO School of Technology, with health, comma, science, comma, technology, and either the comma or not, and animal and plant science. So it's towards the end of the first paragraph.
Got it.
I've said a couple of small items on, on page nine and 10, and you don't need to go to them, but both graphs happen to use pink or shades of, or shades of red. I think for people with disabilities, it may be difficult to, or colorblindness, to identify between the various colors, so we may want to think about that a little bit. I don't know what is good or bad colors, but it just makes me kind of take a pause when I see that.
We, we will investigate that and pick the best color, ers, color.
Talking about the pie chart?
The pie chart, and then the line bar graph above it, both happen to have.
Yeah, they both use the shades of reddish pink.
We're going through a lot of ADA at work right now, so.
Anything else?
That was me.
Yeah, can we take Kathy's microphone away?
Yeah. This is a conversation that you and I have been having, and I don't, I'm not wedded to it ending up in this document, but we talked about coming up with a way to present this that just illustrates things that are discretionary for the district, things we could choose to spend or not spend, versus things that are dictated by state law, by federal law, by, you know, prior actions of the voting body, such as approving the collective bargaining agreements. You know, again, just to draw out that illustration that the amount of this that is actually discretionary in nature is not very large at all, when you get right down to it, and to some extent is easily offset by the amount of variability that you, that we see potentially in federal and state grant revenue, so.
Yeah, Bryant has actually been working on that bar graph, and I think our intention was to try to come up with something we could use in presentations, because one of the things we've discovered is it's, it's a very granular conversation, and left as a standalone, you either have lots and lots of individual notes. So we, we were thinking we would have something for the public hearing and deliberative as a, as a tool we could use to explain sort of exactly that. Because you're, you're right, when you, when you look at the pie graph, one thing to take away from it is a big chunk of the expense is people, but then of that operational cost, what, what do we have control over, and that we could choose to not do, without having detrimental impacts? And I, I think we're getting to a place where we've got that sort of figured out.
Great.
So, yeah, we'll use it, we were going to use it in future presentations.
Yeah, no, perfect. I don't want to use it in a place where you'd have to annotate it so much that you might as well write it out in words, that, that isn't really adding.
Right, but in a presentation, I think it would, would be, it could be powerful.
There was one other, a couple others also. We'll probably have to explain the increase in health insurance, that big line, you know, when people look at the budget, they'll see a big jump. And also in the professional development line, and I spoke to you about that the other night, and you said that that increase has gone because grants have.
Right, and most of our PD money, going back three years, was taken from Title II and from ESAR monies, and we have seen both of those sources gradually diminishing, so we've tended to put more of it in the local operating budget to be able, so that number has gone up.
Right, that might be what explains it, too. There'll be, there might be questions about that.
Yeah, my intention, if you, if you want to humor me for just a second, in the presentation, I, I'm going to focus on page 12 of this quite a bit, because clearly it does break things down pretty clearly. I mean, there are really, when we talk about big impacts on the total budget for this year, salaries certainly, we know a big chunk of that was the teacher contract that was passed, that the voters approved. So there's salary increases that I think are, it's important to note. Clearly, health insurance is probably the biggest driver of this budget, and you can see the $704,890 on page 12 of health insurance. And then, the other big thing to note that is worthy is the, in the tuition line, it's been reduced pretty dramatically, and the reason for that ties, it's twofold. One is that we are, we budget for out-of-district tuition as closely to need as possible, and so we have about $200,000 worth of reduced out-of-district placement costs that we're anticipating. And thank you to the voters, because we've built up our special education trust fund to allow us to be able to budget like that and have a source of funds to go to in the event there's an overrun. You know, along that same line, SST cost has actually gone down as well, to the tune of almost $100,000 there as well. So anyway, so those are the three big items that really are the drivers of this budget, increases in salary, health insurance, and reduced cost in, in tuition. And ultimately, those three numbers are the story.
Would there have to be, in future years, a delineation between tuition for, this is specialized tuition, correct, catastrophic?
Well, there's, there's multiple places where tuition shows up in the narrative. This, the page 12 is the total of the budget.
Total, okay.
If you go to, there's a section on Student Services where it breaks it out more specifically for special education tuition, and if you go to the high school, there's a line that breaks it out for SST tuition.
SST. Will we have to add a line for EFAs?
Not for EFAs, but for open enrollment.
Open enrollment.
Yeah, open enrollment. We, we have a line right now that's in the district operating budget that is a dollar in it, and obviously, as we get further into this, we will probably, at some point, have a more real number to put in there. But the law simply says we have to have a line item, and so we created it, and your guess is as good as mine as to what it'll end up being in a few years.
Thank you for that clarification.
And based on your, talks with other superintendents, that's pretty much whatever Jessica's doing, as far as we understand, it's about a dollar, just a placeholder.
Some are, some are, had talked with the idea of doing a zero, but you can't, like, hold a line with nothing in it, so, so if you're creating a new line, you got to put something in it, so a dollar seems to be the standard.
Yeah, again, worth emphasizing for people watching at home, nobody knows, the, the open enrollment that has been kind of written into state law and reinforced by the Supreme Court, New Hampshire Supreme Court recently, is a complete unknown for every district in this state. So everyone is grappling with what it might mean, but the, the general basis of the law is if we have a student, any number of students, who elect to go and provide their own transportation and attend school in another district somewhere in the state, we would be obligated to pay whatever that district charges in tuition with no recourse whatsoever. We would not be allowed to say no under state law.
Correct. Right now, the, the only provision in it is you have to officially go through a process of determining your district to be an open enrollment district, and right now, the protection we have is that Prospect Mountain School District or High School is one. I believe Franklin is actually an open enrollment, but they aren't actually taking any students or heaven.
No, they actually, at their meeting last week, they said that there would be no students leaving. They did not allow any students.
So right now, the only possibility would be if a student from New Market were to leave to go to Prospect Mountain, because no other district has gone through that process. The Concord School District is investigating it right now, and they, they might pursue it as well.
This is, this is more related to the budget presentation and what voters will see on voting day is related to the cost per pupil, and just, not to sound like a broken record, but making sure that the, the bond payment, that people are aware of what, that we're, New Market as a district is not actually significantly higher than the state average or than other places, but that we have that. I've just, I've had some people asking about some of the things that they've heard that they'll see on, when they're voting for this, without necessarily the context to go with it. So just, you know, I'm looking on page 10, the, the pie chart, just wondering if the depth service can be maybe like a bright blue or orange.
We've got some color, color, color schemes to look at, I guess.
Highlight that, because I think it's, it's kind of easy to blow over with so many other things to be looking at, but that that is not only significant, but something that is going to be presented to the voters without a full lot of understanding about why that's being presented.
And it's important that people realize it actually will be printed on the ballot prior to the operating budget, so that's, that's a piece of information that we have to provide. And to your point, we can't, we can't point out that 2,100 of that is the bond. However, that is in this and all of our public presentations, but on the ballot, it will show the per pupil cost. The other thing that's worth noting is that there is a law that requires us to post administratives, the top four administrative salaries in the district over the last 10 years, the average administrator salary over the last 10 years, and there's one other.
State.
Say it again?
Testing.
Yes, thank you. Actually, the testing has to be on the ballot. We have to, we have to put achievement data, data on the ballot. But those are all requirements of law, and they're very specific about what you can do, so it's important to realize that if there's any discussion of it, it has to take place outside of the context of what we're able to put on the ballot, and that the administrator salary thing, there's a whole set of requirements for where we have to post that information. Literally, there's a, a paper size that they require you to print it on, in a font and everything. It's, it's very specific, so.
Is this new?
As of last year, and 20, the 2026 budget season is the first time it's required. So you will see information about the average administrator salaries in the, in the top four. I'll freely acknowledge I have the highest salary in the district, so you'll see my salary over the last four years. You know, whatever you want to read into that, you know, read into it.
Did I count the time where you went to? Is there, is there anything against having additional information in the general area? Not?
There, there are requirements, but certainly we, we could have information available.
Available for people.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, state law just generally prohibits electioneering, which they typically define as advocating voting for a particular candidate or for or against something. That's not allowed in the polling place, but contextual information is, is fine, is my understanding.
Yeah, I mean, I would encourage us to have, if we have pure per pupil cost, then let's put the definition of per pupil cost, and what parts with bond and without bond, and, you know, let's, if we're going to do great, let's do relative to other districts, or, we don't want to create a war with other districts, but, you know, there needs to be some context to this information, otherwise there's, there's no point in it.
We are, just, just so you realize, it is a conversation regionally, and so we're trying to not create competition between districts. We're all going to try to do exactly the same thing, so that we're not running the risk that someone's all, gee, they did it this way in Dover, why didn't they do, you know? We want to be consistent, and so there is a definite awareness of that.
So just wait until next year, when state law says everyone in the district has to wear a kick-me sign on their. wear a kick me sign on their back at the polling place.
And you'll be smiling pretty.
Anything else, um, on the presentation, suggestions, edits?
I think that, um, we just talked about, um, yeah, the adding a regional column for cost per pupil from Ken, that was related to the presentation, not the, not the full
Going once, going twice. All right, next up on the agenda, if I could get my thing to switch back, um, is one action item, which is to vote to approve the draft budget proposal. So I'd accept a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Lonnie. And you're moving to accept the draft budget proposal as discussed, correct?
Yes.
Sorry to put words in your mouth.
Yes.
Thank you.
But that's exactly what you...
But that's exactly what I did, yes.
I second it.
Thank you, Gary. Um, so a motion from Lonnie, second from Gary, any discussion before we vote?
Should we just point out that...
I, I'm sorry, we probably should. So Jeff Boyd was unable to, to be here with us tonight due to a prior commitment, so it'll be the four of us voting. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous 4-0 to approve the draft budget proposal. Any other business before we adjourn?
Jeff was excused from the last meeting as well, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. All right, I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
I so moved.
Thank you, Kathy.
Second.
Thank you, Lonnie. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.